A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on main wave. Good evening and welcome to the Hollis Select Board meeting and public hearing Wednesday, Good evening and welcome to the Hollis Select Board meeting and public hearing Wednesday, November 5th, 7:00 PM. Call the order in roll call. November 5th, 7:00 PM. Call the order in roll call.
Mike Carnois, Select Board. Mike Carnois, Select Board.
Roger Hicks. Roger Hicks.
Jack Regala. Jack Regala.
Dan Yerumian. Dan Yerumian.
All right, we have a call. Next I ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, we have a call. Next I ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on main all, on main wave. wave. I'm going to change the order here and move public comment down one and move into an I'm going to change the order here and move public comment down one and move into an executive executive session. So we need a motion to move into the executive session? session. So we need a motion to move into the executive session?
I'll make a motion to move into an executive session. I'll make a motion to move into an executive session. Second? Second?
All right, we're going into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title 1, 40560 All right, we're going into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title 1, 40560 for consideration of use of real or personal property. So we'll be going into executive for consideration of use of real or personal property. So we'll be going into executive session. session.
We'll leave. We'll leave.
So we need, oh, we're going. So we need, oh, we're going. Seven. Seven. I'd like to make a motion to end the executive session and start the select board meeting
again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Act 724. twenty twenty-five special town meeting? Second?
All right. Okay. Warrant article to Terry Waters, a resident of the town of Hollis in York County, State of Maine. Greetings. In the name of State of Maine, you hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Hollis in said county and said state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Hollis Town Meeting Room located at thirty-four Town Farm Road on Wednesday, the nineteenth of November, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. In the evening, for the purpose of acting on the following articles. Article one will be elect a moderator by written ballot to preside at said town meeting. Article two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager and consult with the select board to increase the salary of the tax collector for the remainder of the twenty twenty-six fiscal year in the amount he deems necessary and in the best interest of the town, but also within the budget already appropriated for said tax collector by town meeting, and article three, line one oh six of the June tenth, twenty-five annual town warrant. Any comments?
Good evening, Board. Faith Plummer, Hollis resident. The warrant was signed at an executive session on October twenty-nine. Is that correct?
Not during an executive session. Afterwards.
Was it signed at a public meeting?
Yeah, we had a meeting after the executive session.
A select board meeting? Open to the public?
It was announced, yes.
On the fifth Wednesday of the month?
And it posted it? It was posted.
So I guess what I'm asking is, when was the warrant signed?
It was signed at that meeting after the executive session.
That was open to the public?
Yeah, right. Once you post it, yes.
Was that agenda publicized?
The agenda? No, there wasn't any agenda.
So there was no agenda publicized. So I'm asking again, was this warrant signed at a public meeting that was open to the public? And the reason that I'm asking is because it's critical that you follow the steps to finalize the agenda and make it official before it's distributed to the residents. And the warrant signing is a public process as it's a finalization of the meeting's agenda per Title thirty A subsection twenty-five twenty-one. And if this wasn't signed at a public meeting, then you may want to consider halting your what you're doing right now and checking into that, because I'd hate to see something else legal. Go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
Is the public hearing going to continue as if it is?
Yes. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, the warrant was signed at executive session, not at a public meeting, which is required. The signing is a critical step to finalize the agenda and make it official before it is distributed to the residents. The warrant signing is a public process as it is a finalization of the meeting's agenda. The purpose of the public signing is to ensure transparency. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager in consultation with the select board to increase the salary of the tax collector for the remainder of the twenty-six fiscal year in the amount he deems to be necessary." I don't see the transparency in holding a special town meeting when you're basically thinking that only a handful of voters will show up to overturn what the voters of the town decided at an annual town meeting when budgets are decided upon in June. That vote was substantially swung in one direction. Also transparent in that article that we elect a moderator by written ballot, but yet the voters must show hands rather than the use of a ballot. It seems like the only thing transparent about that is the wish to pit employees against each other. Not very good morale or team building. Article thirty-one was passed. Five hundred and ninety-two votes yes, one hundred and twenty-one votes no. Keep in mind that this is based on a twenty-nine-hour-a-week position, and I'm assuming right now that that tax collector is working more than twenty-nine hours per week, so that already skews the budget. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Article three, shall an ordinance entitled twenty twenty-five amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Hollis, Maine regarding cluster subdivision be enacted? The purpose for the ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting. Article four, oh, any comment on that? Anyone on Zoom? Article four, shall the ordinance entitled twenty twenty-five amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Hollis, Maine regarding amendments enacted process be enacted? The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection at the town clerk's office and will be available at the town meeting. Any question on that? The purpose of ordinance is, I'm sorry, given this underhand, and it's twenty-ninth day of October, and it's signed by the select board. Any other comments?
None for me?
Got it? Dan?
Nope.
Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the select board meeting. Second?
Full business minutes of nine seventeen twenty-five and ten one twenty-five. Do I have a motion on those?
Motion to approve minutes from nine seventeen twenty-five, ten one twenty-five.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, workshop with the finance committee on ten twenty-nine twenty-five. Dick, do you want to elaborate on that?
Oh, we just, it was a meeting to kind of outline the beginning of the budget process. Pardon me, I'm listening to myself. The budget process, and that has begun. I sent the first email out with kind of a warning shot saying we'll be collecting our first blush of the budget. And we heard back and forth about where we've been, where we're going, and no real, no real decisions made other than let's get going and make sure we have it done and plenty of time to enact at the turn of the fiscal year.
Great, thank you. Full business C informational meeting regarding Valimil's DMD commissioning on ten thirty twenty-five?
I can give a kind of quick update on that. For those of you who weren't here, it was a full house. Thanks for everyone that showed up to that. It was great showing Brookfield, you know, all the people in town. Got to kind of, Brookfield gave their overview of what they plan to do, and then we had some people from the public get up and ask questions and called it a night after about an hour and a half. I thought it was a very well-run meeting. They had their facilitator run the meeting and seemed to go pretty smooth from what I saw.
Yeah, it was really good, and a really packed house. I think it's the biggest meeting we've had in here, which is pretty cool.
Exactly.
And it actually really helped with the sound, with having a few more bodies in here, so it's great.
All right. New municipal town office update, and we have change order number thirty-seven for allowance credits. Well, we're just about complete. We have a few items that are still up in the air. We've got a little bit of paving done. We have a water system that we have to look at with the state because of the water tests coming back, so that's still pending also. Have the allowance here to sign. That other cost, it's eighteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifty-four cents coming back. Any other comments on the town vote?
I don't, I think it's remarkably complete, you know? I think we're, we're just about there. The odds and ends that I've seen are dealing with blocks that are being fussy and key, keys and codes and doors and that sort of thing, and everything that I've heard is that we're moving past that, so I think it's in pretty good shape.
I know we still have a little bit of echoing in here going back and forth.
Where do we stand with that? The echoing, the sound boards would do.
Yeah, we've got three or more proposals for addressing the acoustics in this, in this room as well as the lobby, and those have just, right, Ben, I think we just maybe have gotten two of them, or maybe three. All right, they're all in. We've got to take a look at what's the best approach, or most acceptable approach, combine that with a look at the cost.
I think we should also be, we should also be looking at, I think, aesthetics, too, because we have this beautiful building, right?
Correct.
And so we want the sound to be dampened, but we also don't want to make it ugly, all right?
Correct.
So that's another piece, and I do believe most sound companies are going to have different patterns to choose from and things like that.
Yep.
These companies, when they come in, okay, and they deal with this, they come in with a sound testing meter or something to see what levels you're at.
That's the next step, I believe. In the quote that I read, it said something to the effect of like, you know, if you'd like to talk more about this, if this, you know, preliminary number looks acceptable to you, we'll come in with our SPL, sound level meters and acoustic, they have these special microphones that test all this stuff, and then they'll give us kind of like, they'll know what the right placing for each panel will be and things like that, so that's the next step would be to basically choose a, maybe a couple of others.
Yeah, they have all, they've all taken their professional approach to this and made the recommendation with an estimate of the value or the, or their quote of the value, and you're right, the next step will be then sharpen the pencil as well as sharpen the response to the acoustics and address that directly. They've said what they believe the fix will be based on their experience, and they'll come in and verify and validate and then move forward if we pick that.
Okay. Next one, comprehensive plan update. Notes from Mary. The committee continues to work with Southern Maine planning on the compliance updates, goals and strategies. They anticipating finishing their review the beginning of December and hold the public hearings in January of twenty-six. Prior hearings scheduled for November and December have been canceled. Next on the agenda, road updates.
Anybody heard of any doing shoulders?
No.
Rob said that the new paving and the shoulders against the new paving are on the docket but not positively scheduled. He did say if necessary, he could go do it, but he's, he's working with getting the folks here that are going to do it. We are ready, as far as I know, for winter. The only thing we haven't done is tell the thermostat to go down where it's supposed to be if we're going to have winter. But other, other than that, I think we're ready.
Yeah, I noticed they painted the lines also.
I'm sorry?
They painted the lines also.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, Salmon Falls Library update.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Saw a nice Facebook post that they're making good progress, but that's pretty much all I saw.
I'm still working on the carryforwards, the next one on the list here. We had some discussions of improving some things in the code office, and there was one other I'm trying to remember.
Payroll.
And, oh, yes, and we started looking at, I think that's coming up.
Yep.
On the item, so there is another one for... So that's to be continued. Minutes approved. Okay, election, I found it. Election updates. Election results for the town of Hollis, Maine, the state of Maine, November fourth, twenty twenty-five referendum election. There are three thousand six hundred and twenty-one registered voters in Hollis. Four hundred and fifty-one absentee ballots were returned. Yesterday, twelve, twelve hundred fifty-four ballots cast in person for a total of seventeen oh five ballots cast on eleven four twenty-five, which is forty-seven point zero eight six percent voter turnout. State of Maine return of votes cast on question one, citizens initiative, there was seven hundred and fifty-seven yes, nine hundred and forty-seven no, and one blank. Question two, citizens initiative, nine hundred and thirty yes, seven seven two no, and three blank. That was certified by Crystal. So that's the election update there.
We do have Martha on the Zoom. If, anything to talk about, Martha, at all, if you can hear us? What a nice place to hold an election, I gotta say. This was great to vote here.
If I may, I want, I want to make sure that we properly recognize the election crew, the long day that they put in. I happened to take a peek at this building, and the doors are opened at five thirty in the morning, and they were closed at nine thirty that night. Now, I'm told that that's earlier than many, some nights for closing, but to me, five thirty in the morning till nine thirty at night is a heck of a day, and they did it with a smile on their face, and everybody seemed to enjoy being in the building and detoured a little bit, did some tours and took a look around. I think it was a success all the way around, and I want, but I really want to commend the, the work that Crystal put in. She was here early. Martha is applauding every inch of this being Crystal's work. Martha was in washing the windows for all the people who pushed the doors open by hand earlier this, this afternoon. So it was a, it was overall a big success and a perfect use of this, this facility. Nice to have it done.
Good.
I also want to commend the, the fact that they did get as much paving done as they did ahead of time, so it was easily accessible and readily, you know, parking was great. Everything seemed to flow. You have something, Martha?
Look at this. She's on Zoom, she's in person, you're everywhere.
It's a long hike down here. I don't have a microphone on my computer, so I can't, I can't communicate.
Okay, I will never do that to you again. Apologize.
I do want to thank the election staff. They were awesome, as As Dick, the town manager, said, Crystal Gardette did the majority of the work leading up to it and ran it for the day. I gave tours. So, and she, she did a great job. And when I got here this morning, she was working on the certification of the election already. I knew she'd be in here and have it, the absentee ballots were almost done. So she's quite a worker and it was great. And I, I do appreciate all of the election workers. And just to give you, I don't know if I should say this on TV, but just to give you an inkling of the kind of stress that an election is, we were not approved to hold our election here till Monday at nine oh three because of the driveway. I'm just saying. But I had already talked to them the week before. I mean, we had to go with it, whatever we ended up with, but it's a lot of stress. And I just want to thank the elections office, Julie Flynn, the deputy secretary of state in charge of elections, and Grace Perron is who we worked with out there and she was wonderful. And I thanked them, you know, for their grace and, and their patience through all this because you're supposed to have your paperwork done ninety days before. So, and they, they were very gracious to us and said, well, we haven't been dealing with the stress. So, but we, we made it. And, you know, it's just, you think elections are an easy thing to pull off and they're really not. So I really appreciate every single person that filled in every single state, every single seat here on election day. It's a good crew. I think I only angered one voter. He'll be back. And I apologize for that. Now, it's probably on me a little bit, but anyways, it was a good day, I think. So I, I do, again, I just want to thank Crystal Gardette. And we also, I should have brought the list of everybody that works and I forgot. And our husbands, my husband Harley Hough and her husband Chris Gardette, they end up working too. So they worked, you know, they worked the whole day. So very appreciated, thank you.
Thank you again, Martha. Appreciate it very much to you and all your, all your clerk staff that worked that. Okay, and the new business. You're up on the. Okay, town manager update. New Payloro system, Paper Trails approved by the board on ten twenty-nine.
We came to a conclusion on a review of three proposals with a company known as Paper Trails. And they will, in a very short sense, automate our payroll process and take that out of our day-to-day activities on a weekly basis. In the, in the, without going to the every gory detail of it, they will actually issue the payroll. They will issue, they will also submit the withholdings and the insurances and all of the allocations to the, of, of the payroll. They also have an element that is, I think will be beneficial, and that is to review our human resources activities. And they have a, a consulting wing that does some business with that. They have the ability to store recruitment documents, performance reviews, God forbid, performance improvement plans if they are needed and so forth, and help keep that flowing in the direction that it should. The, the most significant element is the fact that it'll give Diane probably a day back of, of her week and the ability to focus in other areas that maybe need some attention as well. That's the, that's the payroll. And if I may, I'd just like to make some comments that, you know, this, this is day one hundred twenty-eight. I don't know if you realize that or not. And it's been a seesaw, as we all know. But I want to thank everybody for the work that they put into keep moving forward and keep charging ahead. We're looking at policies, procedures, and all of those changes can be stressful. And every day I think, well, we made two steps forward. Some days I think we're spinning our tires in the mud, but that's what life is all about. And I've had many, many visitors and many, many suggestions about how things might be better or might be worse. And I welcome anybody to please come in to visit. The door's always open and I do appreciate it. One comment that I forgot to mention with regard to the election, we had a couple people mention it to us and I want to just clarify. They said, what's the matter? Why aren't you flying a flag on one of the most important days of the year, election day? Our flagpole has, has nodded it or something and the, the general contractor is going to bring a lift and go take a look at the pulley and get things back online so it can be utilized. We just couldn't move the ropes to raise the flag, but that will be taken care of. That's all I got.
Jake and John were going to tackle that this week.
Yes.
The wind stopped blowing.
You're right, yeah, you gotta take that into consideration. I wouldn't want to be up on a.
No, not with the wind.
List with the wind blowing like that.
Okay, next on mowing contract extension. And the recommendation of the town manager, we voted to extend the mowing contract till next year.
To Taylor and Sons?
Correct, Taylor and Sons. Now, we have. Two appointments, Donna Hanson, member, and Lee Coleman, alternate for the Saco River Commission. I have a motion on those, please.
Motion to appoint Donna Hanson and Lee Coleman to the Saco River Quarter Commission.
Second, all in favor.
Yes.
Okay, great, sign them in. Next, purchase orders. We have one for Banner Corp. from Chief Young, forty-five ninety-three. Replace single-phase brake panel to three-phase and add an electrical hot water heater and baseboard heat in the bathroom. Replacement phase.
That's one we talked about last time.
Out of the old furnace for three thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. I guess that was necessity in order to add in those things. They had to change over the panel too. And we have it on that. And inaugurated new warrant the week of October twentieth was eighty thousand four twenty-nine. Warrant last week, thirty-one thousand five five three. Warrant this week, two hundred and one thousand seven seven six. Payroll week of October twentieth, thirty thousand eight forty-five. Payroll last week, thirty-nine thousand six fifty-six. And payroll this week is thirty-six thousand seven oh four. Which leads us into correspondence and announcements.
That's me. Maine Housing has announced that the funding for the home energy assistance program has been paused. This program helps eligible Mainers pay for heating costs throughout the winter. While York County, while York County community action will continue accepting and processing applications, Maine Housing cannot issue payments until the federal funding is restored. If you need additional help with home heating costs or resources, please contact their outreach program at two oh seven four five nine two eight nine nine or our town manager regarding our, our town's heat fund. Twenty twenty-six dog licenses are available now. You can license your dog in person at the Hollis Town Hall during regular business hours or over the phone if we have the current rabies info. Call two oh seven nine two nine eight five five two, extension twenty-seven. There will be a rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday, December sixth from one to three P M. at the Buxton Public Works Garage at two fifteen Portland Road. The cost is eight dollars per vaccination, cash only. Dogs must be on a leash and cats in carriers. Bring your pet's previous vaccination certificate for faster service and three-year vaccination. It's sponsored by the Hollis Animal Clinic, the Towns of Buxton in Hollis, and the Vacation Land Dog Club. All town, all town offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day, the Veterans Day holiday on Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five. We will reopen on Wednesday, November twelfth at eleven A M. The town is accepting applications, applications for non-municipal budget requests until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The application is on our website, hollismaine.org, under the select boards page, or you can email, email Bennett Flinner at adminsecretary@hollismaine.org. The twenty twenty-five Spirit of America Awards will be presented by the York County Commissioners at their office on Wednesday, November nineteenth at four thirty. Awards will be presented in person or by Zoom to Hollis individual recipients Jabraghul and Kevin Flinner. And for the group town manager hiring committee, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another business, there's notes from Mary here that I will read real quick. November SNAP benefits will not be issued by the state of Maine due to the ongoing federal shutdown. E H H S sent statement saying November SNAP benefits will not be issued until federal funding is restored or updated directions are received from the Food and Nutrition Service. Governor Mills issued a statement to deliver one point two five million to Good Shepherd Food Bank and other programs in Maine. Benefits affect one hundred and seventy thousand Maine families. Details of the fund include six hundred and fifty thousand in governor's contingency fund or funds from the Good Shepherd Food Bank to support food pantries and anti-hunger initiatives throughout Maine, six hundred thousand for Age Wise Maine, Aging of, Agency of Aging for increasing community dining locations, grab-and-go meals and extra meals through the Meals on Wheels. Ten thousand to the Hunters for the Hungry Program, process costs to game processing bear, deer and moose. Each month, Maine issues twenty-nine million in federal funding for SNAP provided to one hundred and seventy thousand Maine families with the average family of four receiving five hundred and seventy-two dollars monthly. In Hollis, there are one hundred and forty-four households that receive SNAP benefits. In our own county, the Hollis P T A led by Ashley Dow, collecting food for the school's backpack program until December first, twenty twenty-five. Review the flyer and location of the donation boxes. Food and money can be accepted as donation. The flyer is on our website also, if you would like to read that. General assistance guidelines require that the same maximums are considered with individuals asking for food vouchers. Overall maximum, family of one, one thousand five one seven. Family of two, one thousand seven twenty-one. Family of three, two thousand two hundred and twenty-one. Family of four, two thousand seven ninety-eight. Borderline applicants should apply because some costs are deducted from your overall income. Recommendations that you go to your local food bank, the local food bank, food pantry in Hollis is at the Hollis Center Church, right across from the fire station on two oh two. They provide monthly grocery orders and weekly produce baked goods for browsing free of charge. Hollis Center Church, three thirty, three eighty-eight Hollis Road. The phone is two oh seven five six nine three six six one, extension two. Pantry is open on Thursdays, ten to eleven A M. See website for more information or make an order online at holliscenterchurch spelled out dot org slash food pantry. Hollis Christmas Fund provides help for Christmas presents for Hollis families with children ages zero to seventeen. Please contact Faith Plummer if you like to receive help or to volunteer at two oh seven nine two nine eight five five two, extension seventeen seventeen. Donation and funds available to support Hollis, Hollis Christmas Fund, Hollis Heating Fund. Continue with the Klink support for returnable bottles, which receive one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty cents in donations last quarter. Thank you very much. Backpack program for Hollis P T A, Hollis Park and Recreation Program, Hollis Sports Complex and Hollis Conservation Commission. Also, notes from Mary.
Okay.
You're also, okay, any other business? No, okay. Upcoming town committee meetings, board meetings. Planning board meeting on Wednesday, November twelfth at seven P M. Sports Complex Committee meeting on Thursday, November thirteenth at seven P M. Special Town Meeting and Select Board Meeting on Wednesday, November nineteenth at seven P M. You must be present to vote. Safety Committee Meeting on November twentieth at nine A M. Conservation Commission on Thursday, November twentieth at five thirty P M. Yes.
I have a question on this, ten thousand for the Hunters?
Yeah.
For the Hungry Program? Is this when, if you were to, if you were successful in getting deer, bear, moose, whatever, and you go to have it processed, is this a reimbursement?
Correct, they reimburse the butcher for processing the meat.
Okay, because that's, it was a question because I know one place you would go. They just took care of it.
Right.
This is real, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other meetings anyone know about that I missed? Okay. Number eleven, public comment.
Martha Hoff, town clerk. I came back because I forgot to say a few thank yous. This transition into this building has been a little stressful for some of us. So I want to thank the people that have really helped us along. Bennett Flinner is the glue that keeps this place going, let me tell you. She never ever sells anybody out. She is positive, helpful, it's amazing. And Dwayne Hanson has been very helpful to us. He was instrumental along with Dick Moore and our town manager in helping us get that final approval for our election. It's nothing we hadn't done, it was to do with the driveway. So Dwayne, you know, took the initiative to, to help us out with that and talked with the state office, which he didn't have to do, it was awesome. So I just want to thank those people and, and really, really appreciate, you know, that we have people here who are really on a team and, and really help and I really, really appreciate that. And then I'll just tell you a funny, so you can all go home on a funny note. So in two thousand twenty-one, we made a bullet list of things we'd want to see in the new town hall. And I can honestly say that nothing on my list got done. And of course, you've heard me talk about a closet for my purse and my coat many times. Well, there still isn't one. So the logical place is I put my purse and my coat in the safe. Well, the only problem with that is you need a key to do the safe and the key's in my purse. So if you come sometime and I'm just sitting in the office and can't go anywhere, that's what happens. So I just think that's kind of comical and I'm always saying now, I can't find anything. And Crystal will say, you couldn't find it before.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Just gonna ask, anybody else mentioned when you first coming in how dark it is out there?
Has been mentioned.
Yeah. Excuse me, I noticed when we came in, maybe I have to think about some type of lighting. Incorporate that, wouldn't they? Do the pond side maybe? Sorry. That's it.
Got it. Okay, there was one other thing. We didn't need to discuss the alarms, did we?
Not yet.
Okay.
Make a motion.
So is there any other comments, no one on Zoom? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn at this time. Thank you, everybody.
Second.
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.